We will be celebrating them at our June 13th, June 13th meeting for an early reception prior to the board meeting. We'll give you the exact time, but I'm thinking this will be about four o'clock in the afternoon on the day of our board meeting. Okay? Please encourage them to be here.
Okay, we're going to move on to C business, slide number one. Actually, I have C one. Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Steve Superintendent Martinez, Jerry Stratten, CBO. I am here before you to present the AB 1200 public disclosure certification for the California School Employees Association, Chapter 149. Now, this AB 1200 states that our district, and in fact, all districts who must present an AB 1200, have the ability to fund a bargaining unit agreement for the present year and for two subsequent years. So it's a three-year certification while remaining solid with the required reserves, as specified, and in our case, 3%, or about $3 million. After the AB 1200 certification is developed in the business department, and Lona is the originator of the computations, and I then sign it and the superintendent signs it, at which time it goes to MCOE. MCOE does a thorough review, and they come back with a yea, we agree with you, or no, you can't do it. Once they do that, it comes back to the board for ratification, after which it is signed by the president or his representative, and the superintendent or her representative. In years past, without AB 1200s, districts sometimes made agreements that they could fund for one year, and two or three years later were insolvent. King City is a good example. So the three-year picture, the snapshot, sustains our ability to continue to do business with this agreement. And I would tell you of the thorough review in my office and at MCOE, I stand before you and say that we can sustain our business with the required reserves, and I surrender that. Any questions? Thank you very much. So, do we have a discussion? Okay, do I have a motion? Well, we approve the report.
On certification.
Okay.
I'll take up the motion.
And we've got a motion on the floor, second, to approve the AB 1200 certification, TAs, and the salary schedule for ratified bargaining agreement, CSEA. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Just a comment on that. I just want to think on CSEA negotiation team for their patience. This was on your agenda, the last board meeting was pulled off the agenda, and we resolved our few questions that we had around that. So you've been patient, thank you. And again, just as I said about SETC, it's been, it's been a good relationship, I think, a strong relationship of working with you through the negotiation process. We look forward to continuing that relationship, and this is a two-year contract. So I really do appreciate you sticking with us, and appreciate all of your support.
Okay, so we're going to move on to D1. Oh, and just a comment. The AB 1200 for SETC voting was completed, and everything was ready to go, and the only change is going to be that it's going to be less money than we had planned for in the original one. So I believe we won't have any problem getting it through, should go through quickly. But it's a matter of it being correct before the set date.
Can I add one thing?
Yes.
So for SETC, the teachers voted on Thursday evening around ratifying the side letter on five extra days and the salary increases. And the salary increases went through, the five extra days were not passed by the majority vote. So we had in the background, had prepared an AB 1200 based on those five extra days. Because if we're going to go to the county office event, we're going to ask for the greatest amount that is going to be, you know, that we're going to be responsible and obligated to pay out over those three years, as Jerry talked, and be able to sustain those raises and the offers that were on the table. So unfortunately, because the five extra days were not passed, we don't have an AB 1200 that could be approved. Even though we were already working in the background with county office event, we were hoping that we could have ratified that this evening, and that was the reason for pulling that agenda item. Again, in the spirit of transparency, I will say that, you know, the county probably would have gone ahead and said, you know, your AB 1200 reflects a much greater amount than what that is. But we want to make sure that when this board, when I'm gone, when you're gone, whoever's gone, because I'm telling you, we're going back and looking for five or six years of board analysis, and they're not there, and some times are incorrect, we're surfacing information that needs to be accurate. So in the best interest of having a document that is totally accurate, to the best of our ability, we're going back through the process. The AB 1200 process takes about 10 days, doesn't happen overnight. We are anticipating that we can move this fast forward. We're hoping to have a special board meeting if the board members are available on the 23rd, and still move forward to a fast timetable for payout on the retros, and on our, seeing that in our paychecks sooner and later. So that's, that's kind of the reason why we pulled it. It was extremely important to me that we're approving a document that is as accurate as we think it can be.
Thank you.
So item D1.
Yes.
You have the tentative agreements with California School Employees Association, Chapter 149. So these are the tentative agreements associated with the AB 1200 that you just suggested. So we recommend that you approve these like that.
There, it's not a separate attachment because it was a better than the AB 1200.
Oh.
So we wanted to save some trees.
We're looking at the SETC.
We made reference to a C attachment, A, C1.
That's, okay. So do I have a motion to approve the tentative agreements and salary schedules with Salinas? I think I said that. It's already been approved, but let's go ahead and do it.
So both.
Okay, second.
I'll second.
So there's a motion on the floor to approve the tentative agreement salary schedules with the Salinas, oh, I'm sorry, with the California School Employees Association, Chapter 149. Did I say that correctly? Tentative agreement salary schedules with the SCEA, Chapter 149. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Five, zero. No, we're, we're on to D3. Salary schedule on the board. Management, average compensation.
So I'll speak to this since I think all the management people are in there, and I'm not, so I can speak to it. Board analysis that you have before you is a salary increase reflecting the agreed upon and at least ratified by the, by the union members on the 4% salary on the schedule for 2015-16, 2% off the schedule for 2015-16, 3% on the schedule for next year, and a 2% off the schedule for that. One of the things that you'll see reflected in our management salary schedule for the, let's try to find out what the actual title is, management team. On the management team's schedule, you will see a change for a number of days from this year to next year, and that's reflecting an additional five extra days as we offered for our SETC membership. What I will say is that principals' contract, when I look back to six years, was it 220? It was, went down to 210. Anytime that we have an economic downturn, probably the first thing to do is to have a reduction in days. You don't see that reduction in days necessarily in a teacher's contract unless they're taking away the PD days. But with principals, they took a huge cut, and that was 10 days off their contracts. And so we're putting five days back on, and we're, we're seeing that they're already working way over those five days, somewhere between 10 and 20 days extra. And so I go see that reflected in the management team's schedule. The reason that there are not necessarily any others is because just the way we offered the five extra days for our teachers' union, and for our instructional, CSEA staff, we will be able to pay for that from, we didn't, we didn't offer to, but it will be, I mean, instructional staff can tap into additional professional development on the classified end by the use of supplemental and concentration grant dollars. And that's where the revenue is coming, both for teachers who attend on a voluntary basis this year for the five days. And by the way, I just want to say that for me personally, one of the most important things was to provide teachers the opportunity for the number one concern I always hear, which is time. They don't have time, we have not had professional development along, around the new 21st century teaching and learning strategies, around the new call and course strategies. And so our intent was to provide and to pay for that time, and not just pay for it, but put it on the salary schedule, because she points to a 2.7 raise. But, you know, and we have the dollars from the supplemental concentration grant monies to do that. So that was the clear intent. The intent was also to provide them for planning and reflection time, to really get down and be able to rule our craft forward. So with this, we're doing this with the management team, we're adding those five extra days, it's not even back to where they were, you know, five or six years ago, but we're moving forward with that. I will say that as of today, when I checked with Ms. Sanders, and we're having a very good response. We have almost 150 teachers signed up for the first day of professional development in June, and over 120 teachers already signed up for additional days. So there is a, there is a desire to participate in the professional development that is being offered, and we're really thankful to have that opportunity. So thank you. Any questions from the board? Carol wants to have a question, but we're on the salary schedule.
No.
Okay.
Mr. Reyes.
Carol Reyes, that's me posted. There's a couple of things I want to talk about. First of all, the five days, teachers, we put out a survey months, a few months ago, teachers were interested in more days, they did not want them in June, and I believe that was the reason that this was not voted down. This is the first thing, first time that executive board members and negotiation team members could remember anything being voted down. I mean, it's, it's, so I think it should be taken as a very strong statement of what teachers want and what they don't want, and they didn't want them in June. I had shared that with the district administration when, you know, when we did the survey. So it's not that teachers don't want professional development, it's not that we're not willing to do that, but it's the timing. For instance, this year and next year, school ends on Friday, we do not have a birthday, so teachers will either have to have their classrooms all cleared out by that Friday, or as I'm already seeing that I'm going to have to do, because I did sign up for the five days, that week I'll be going to, you know, professional development from whatever it is, eight to three, and then I'm going to have to go work in my room for, from three to five, or three to six, or something, for however many days it takes me to get my room cleaned up. Yeah, I could do some of that the week, the last week of school, but I have students all day, and then there's other things. So, you know, it really needs to be taken into consideration that the June time is difficult for us. So I just wanted to say that. The other thing, it bothers me, I understand AB, whatever it was, I get 1200, sorry, I understand that, but it bothers me that management is going to get their raise that we worked on, it's a me too, we've been negotiating for a year, it's a real bother that management would get that raise before we did. And I would just ask the board to, this could be held up and decided and voted on at the same time as ours is on the 23rd, and I think it would just look a lot better, look a lot better. Because we're the ones that negotiated this, and we looked, like I said, for a year, and I talked about it at the time of your special board meeting, that we had been very patient. And so I'm not saying that they, they shouldn't get it, I'm not saying anything, but I think for them to get it ahead of us is, I'd say.
Can I get the top of that?
Well, I'll get later, the same day, won't we?
Well, they don't get the money, it's sort of that, that she's saying that it'd be approved, people.
Well, we won't get it, they'll get it. They can be, they can get the payout before we can, when we have, because we have, sorry.
That's not my understanding of it.
Well, what we're really trying to do, can I just comment, is push that AB 1200 as fast as we can through county office. We don't see one problem. It's already been scrutinized at a higher amount. It is probably going to be signed off, we're hoping by mid next week. We're hoping then to have our, our board meeting on, at the latest, May 23rd, and we are looking to see, and Jerry, I'm thinking you want to say something, still being able to meet the same timelines. We're not looking at the timelines as being different.
That's a bit different. It is a bit different, because I was told the other day, and I mean, you know, it was all kind of, you guys, you had just discovered it, so I was told the timelines would be changed. So that does change it somewhat, but I still don't understand why theirs has to be okay today ahead of ours.
Thank you for your comment.
Mr. Gordon. I'm sorry, Mr. Stratten. I just reiterate, the superintendent stated, that is, initially it looked like we would need to delay it because of a board meeting in June to approve the AB 1200. But with a special board meeting, and I will personally walk the AB 1200 up to the MCOE finance, and over to their CBO's office for signature, and seeing that we've agreed to the TAs, and that it's less money than we pushed forward in the first one, we will begin loading data to be able to pay all the teachers at the new rate on 31 May, as we're doing for classified and for management.
We're really pushing, this is not an easy feat, I have to say. We, our business department worked hard to get the AB 1200 based on the 189 days, and to have a turnover of a day. We, you know, to be able to get that and signed off by honorary county office event in one day, that's a miracle. Meaning, we were working behind the scenes already, having them look at our AB 1200 in hopes that it went through. It didn't. But we are very confident that, again, it's going to take days for business department to rework the AB 1200, but we're confident, because MCOE has already seen this as a higher, at a higher rate of what we were going to pay out, that this AB 1200 will go through, we'll be able to have the board meeting, and I don't see any, any delays. But we were thinking, because we met in closed session, one of the items was setting a date for the special meeting. So with that in mind, which we didn't have, you know, in our information, when we talked to you, Carol, on the phone, we're really trying to work on our end the very best that we can, and along with county office staff, to make this happen as quick as we can. But your vote was Thursday night. Normally, an AB 1200 takes 10 days, it would have been on June agenda. We're really working ourselves up to try to get that timeline done, so we're hopeful.
Sorry, can't let that go by, Ms. Martinez. We started negotiations, I'm not going to go through that whole timeline again, but we started over a year ago. We were patient through all of that. The last, we had the last bargaining, I forget the date, but, I mean, I work all day, we had to get copies of tentative agreements out, then we had to get ballots out, we, you know, we had to have a general assembly in order to get that information out. It's not like we were all just sitting around and just waiting, and that we were trying to push it out, or make your timeline, your time, difficult. I mean, we were working very hard, they worked during the day at their job, we were working in the evenings at the second job, which is union business, at getting this done. So I, I, yeah, I just, and I still don't understand, it just would be to me a good faith for the board to just say, we will okay the management with the teachers on the 23rd.
You two are like the old married couple. We, no, we, we do appreciate your patience, and all the work that you've done. And you know what, I've got no problem with taping the thing until the 23rd, if, if, if that's something that would, you know, I have no problem with that. If you have enough time to do things, would you have enough time to do things, Mr. Stratten, if we didn't vote on the, the management until the 23rd?
Frank is also waiting to comment.
Okay, go ahead, finish this. Then I'm going to talk about something.
We're assuming that the TAs, as they are now stated, and the 184-day salary schedule will be approved. I don't see any issue with that. And so we're beginning to load that, along with the management data that we would, that we'd ask for approval of tomorrow. If we delay the management one, it'll, it will probably be doable, it'll be more nights and overtime, that we already have people coming in on weekends to do. To ramp up, to get the thing to be paid in, at the end of May. There'll be an additional cost for additional overtime if we start later, but I'm, I'm going to start with the teachers tomorrow. We just, we will load it so it's ready to pay. It's very important, I think, to pay all of our teachers in May versus June, when we anticipate there might be a delay, and we'll include management with that. Having it approved would be a little cleaner. If you want to delay the approval, we can react to the decision of the board.
Mr. Gordon was going to wait a while, and he made his comment.
Are you commenting on this item? Okay, I just thought.
I have a comment on this item, but a different aspect, so I'm not sure.
Well, I would just, I, I concur with, with Carol. I just think it's, I think it sounds bad. I think it's bad for us, for us to okay management tonight and not the teacher's contract. So if everybody can get paid by the 31st, then I, I would like to see this table until our special board meeting, where we, where we approve the teacher's contract as well. Not because I don't think, I mean, I, everybody's going to get paid, it's just a matter of what would look better. I would agree with Carol, I think it's going to look, I think it's going to be received poorly, and I, I don't, I would rather, I'd rather everybody celebrate the fact that we have come to a wonderful conclusion, and everybody's going to have money, and, you know, and CSEA, they waited a month, and, you know, I, I just, you know, I just, everybody was patient there, I think we can all be patient a couple of weeks more, just be good things.
Okay. I agree with Carol first.
For the first time, I think.
All right, so are we, should we just table this? Do we have to vote on table?
I don't know.
I think we do.
No, I think we're going to table it.
Yeah, that's fine with me. As long as Jerry can start loading for the administrators also.
Yes.
As along with the teachers. You know, don't hold that up, you know, because we're going to approve it on the 23rd. Okay. Be my pleasure. Thanks. Please, Mr. Stratten.
Hi, Frank Gordon, Mission Park School. So I, I'm not trying to get in the middle of the language, I want to switch gears. I'm talking about D3, which is the executive compensation, and forgive me, I don't want to sound ignorant, but I don't live in your world, which is education. Anytime there's an upward augmentation of executive compensation, I don't need to speak out. And I'm certainly not pointing this toward, toward principals and vice principals and folks who are close to the line staff, who do the actual, I use different terminology, the actual field work, you know. I'm, I'm talking about the upper management, such as the assistant superintendents. So I, I just, I'm curious, as a community member, again, I haven't talked to anybody, parents or community members, this is all me speaking, but I'm curious what the total impact to your budget will be of the upward adjustment. You said there was a 4% raise, and then subsequent adjustments upward in the second year, I think. So what's the total cost of the budget? How is this being paid for? And what, what percentage, I guess if you're going to talk about compaction, I mean, Carol mentioned that there's this me too, right? So the management unit probably automatically gets whatever upward adjustments negotiated by the unit, and that's to alleviate some sort of compaction. What's an acceptable rate of compaction in this school district? And can we, basically, I'm advocating for not, I just want to exclude the assistant superintendents, no offense, Jerry, your features, but I think that, or more, that I think that, heck, I can't even get $35,000, $40,000 to pay for crossing yards, I, I don't, I want to know how much money it's going to cost to upwardly adjust their, their salaries? Because that's an ongoing cost. And I think those, that money can be used for better things. And I've said this before, when this topic has come up with the assistant superintendent. So I'm lodging my objection. If we perhaps, you know, it's kind of a moot point, you tabled the vote anyway, but perhaps if it's brought back, you might consider carving out the assistant superintendents from that vote. Thank you.
Okay, that is tabled.
Well, the school calendar. We're going to talk about a school calendar.
That is another month.
This is just.
Okay, so you have a draft of the 2016-17 school calendar, and you just have the identified holidays, staff development days. I just want to note that I did entertain suggestions and input from both bargaining units, and this draft unfortunately does not address the request by CSEA to have one of the president's holidays off. And due to that, we are offering their holiday limits November, but we know for the last two years that they've given up those holidays, and going forward, we'll address their input and hopefully honor that in the, you know, going forward. Just the other note is the flag days aren't there for the staff development days. SETC did not ratify the side letter, so it's not, these are optional, these are voluntary days, tentative, assigned to the end of this quarter. So those are the major changes.
So are you going to note that on the final calendar, that those are voluntary, not, I mean, those are optional?
I could do that, it's okay. Sort of differently and rightfully optional.
Yes, do I have a motion?
Let's move on to item D4.
Okay, the second to approve the calendar. A motion, and a second to approve the 2016-17 school calendar. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Five, zero. And the final action, revision of preschool coordinator job description.
And before we go into that, could I ask if this item be tabled as well? And it's just on, based on getting some more information. I think my, I, I, my concern with... with this, uh, it's not the job description, it's the job period, is, we, we just heard information tonight on the director of special education, who will get the same salary, you know, has the same salary range, but who oversees sixty employees, eight hundred students, a world of, of ed law, and, you know, just all these issues, versus a person who is gonna oversee, um, a very much smaller group of classrooms and staff, and yet it's the same money, so, I would like to see this table pending more information on, you know, like, how many preschools we have, how many students does it serve, can there be something in here for, you know, developing a plan to increase the number of preschools, or, you know, I, I mean, I, that would be my own, I would like to see this item taped. That's just me.
Ms. Chytus, did you bring any information to the board?
I have some information, I don't know if it's all the information that you, or request, and I could share with you when I have, if that will suffice, so, um, as far as the, the job description being up before you, and hoping to vote on it, um, so the program, preschool program coordinator position and job description exists, so it's currently a non-filled position, so as we, um, decided to go forward and post it until the latency, there was an opportunity to write it, and the major revision you see is in the number of work years. I'm sorry, days. So, um, but yes, in the board analysis, we did not provide the following, which is, we have nine sites, nine school sites that have preschools, which include, in some cases, two teachers, an AM and a PM, which is a total of fourteen teachers across the district, um, and a given amount of classified instructional assistance supporting the teachers, we have a total of three hundred and eight preschool students, so those are, are, those are some of the demographics of our preschool.
Yeah, no, thank you, that was, I, I just...
Mary wanted to add to, to some of the responsibilities that are not noted in the job description.
I have been the administrator, working with the program manager for preschool programs for about the past nine years, our state preschool contract is the largest in the county, and it's about one point two million dollars, so the, as we just said, the one, the program manager is a person on the ground, supporting our teachers in the classroom, spending about sixty percent of their time in teachers' classrooms, making sure that a quality program is in place for our students that is in compliance with the funding requirements that come, it is the only, it's not over the category, but state funded program that is reviewed annually by CDE with an onsite visit, this year it was part of the federal program monitoring visit, otherwise it's outside of them, it's the only program where CDE sends a consultant, and it is reviewed annually, we have not had major findings. The other, um, reason, it is the only, our staff are, um, in a sense, islands of their own, working on school sites, they are included, but the professional development that we do for TK and through sixth grade teachers is different than what our preschool teachers are doing, they're teaching to the preschool, I'm gonna fluff the word, um, it's not pillars, it's learning, I can't even think of the title of the booklet right now, but it's basically their standards that they're teaching to, which are very, they're somewhat aligned to the TK, but there's an extensive amount of training that they need and able to provide the type of quality, also down the road right now, um, the state is requiring that state preschool programs move to something called the Q S R I, I believe the Quality System Review Index, or something, that requires, um, an even higher level of rigor in the review of the type of programs in terms of staffing, training requirements, and the county just hired their full-time coordinator to oversee that initiative, which will be trickling down toward all of our centers, it is a challenge, in that I said that they're islands of themselves, they're spread out across our school, so the program manager is needing to go, um, from site to site to address those needs, the other thing is, with the enrolling of the families, we need somebody to monitor, we have some classified staff that run and work in our offices, but there's an awful lot of requirements in terms of the families that can be served, the type of documentation that needs to be held, and the type of, um, concerns that may come up when a family is not allowed to participate because of income paperwork, that we have to have somebody that can be that person that can meet with the families and address that determination that was made by the review of the documents that were submitted, and in addition, all of our preschool rooms, um, are licensed under social services, which is another, um, form of monitoring that is very intense, and to have somebody that, we have, those are unannounced visits annually to every room, and the type of, I don't wanna call it minutia, but it is somewhat minutia that is required to have a preschool room versus a TK room right next door with a child a month older, is, um, an incredible amount of knowledge that is needed to make sure that that lid is on the trash can, and that our teachers are there supported in knowing what the facility requirements are to run a licensed preschool program, and our clients have, can report concerns as any other person through our uniform complaint procedure, but they can also address concerns directly to social services, so we work very diligently to make sure that our sites are compliant and offering the best high-quality program we can, and for this year, I, we knew that we could, I've always, um, overseen a different level of the grant management, and we knew that we have had such a strong program that has really good roots, and has been well monitored for the last decade plus, as we've had the grant, that it could survive a momentary gap in that type of attention, but for it to sustain the quality and to grow, which is what we want, so that we can provide excellent programs for our preschool, um, students, it needs somebody that can give it the attention that it deserves, and it, long-term, if the quality would deteriorate if there was not somebody there to provide that type of, um, support.
One of the things that I think is important to understand is that with our state preschool programs, we don't have a choice, we need an administrator in charge, again, that's a compliance issue, that's not one way the district has to decide on, um, if we were, if we have a federal program, and we have a state review every year on state preschool because it's a, it's just a different piece of the way the state does their business, but if we had, for instance, principals, a slipper of a principal's responsibility to be, um, evaluating our preschool teachers, that that might not pass the muster for the compliance end around our preschool programs that are housed at specific school sites, so what they really wanna see is an administrator in charge overseeing the entire program, I will say the rigor of preschool, um, has really changed since I was a state preschool teacher, I think they're called ESLSR's, aren't they, so what they're called, the, the preschool standards are...
That's our room environment, our environmental, it's a rating scale.
And, and the documentation around, um, we don't even do that with our kinder TK first grade teachers, we don't, the standards that they are held to around, um, the actual documentation of student progress, the DR...
DRD, the DRD.
Is, is, we also have to administer that, that is collected by First Five to measure, and everybody else under the sun, to measure, um, kinder readiness, and it is, you know, being used as a data point, not just throughout our district, and not our district, our county, but in the state, it is that kind of requirement that's being used, so there's a lot of elements to, um, the program that I think are complex, um, but we can certainly, it's your pleasure to get back to with this job description.
I withdraw my wanting to table it.
It was just really the additional days, at the time we were updating it, it was the fact that it has come to our attention the last several years, especially with our business office, in opening and closing the year, the program manager's work here was ended, and really the five additional days, which is what we moved with changing the title, which is adding five days that the grant could cover, was to ensure that they were able to be here from beginning to end to open and close the grant.
It's a little tricky, and I will say that Mary is very correct in saying complaints can be directed, uh, directly to social services, and I remember, within the last month, we had social services show up at preschool doorstep, uh, because they were investigating a complaint, so, it's, you know, there's outsized entities, along with the, the Department of Ed, that we have stipulations from which we have to operate with underneath this program.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve the revised job description for the preschool program coordinator?
I think so, move.
We have a motion, and a second, to approve the revised job description for the preschool program coordinator, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All votes? Five zero.
Any questions or ideas from the board in terms of, I never have a special meeting, but for our June agenda, any ideas that you're, if you want to respond to, any questions that were brought forward?
Mr. Hoffman, you?
Well, we talked about getting more information for, uh, on past programs, like the summer program.
Yeah, I think we're gonna discuss that at the retreat, and you wanna do that later?
Yeah, I think basically, yeah, okay.
It sounds like, it sounds like there's more available to us that, you know, they're asking parents, how they, they're asking all kinds of, they're evaluating this thing better, but we just haven't heard any about it, so, let's find out about that. Francisco, anything more specifically put under each other?
Well, no.
Okay, then our next meeting is gonna be June thirteenth, and June twenty-seventh after that, and, uh...
I just remembered something.
Yes.
Can we get an update on kindergarten enrollment for next year as of June? Because it's been, now, it'll have been three months, so, it'd be kind of interesting going out to summer, like, how many we have, just so we can look at what the numbers are.
I haven't, well, I just was thinking about the Lincoln situation with the, the non-borders, the enrollment areas, we need more information than that, so we can decide what we wanna do, I mean, uh, there's a problem that we need to work on, so, I'd like, you know, go there, something like that.
Do we wanna redraw district plan?
What I'm hearing from the board is you want information around the historical perspective?
Right.
We can certainly bring that to you, and, um, maybe look at some different options you might wanna consider, and, um, we can move forward with that. I just, will say that, as, I, I don't remember if Sean or Frank stated tonight, that when we were looking at the research, the area boundaries were last officially approved in two thousand and five, and there's no board analysis that we can discover, um, when, and that was with the closing of Lincoln School in two thousand and five, when the school reopened, we did not find any documentation in board records around the resetting of boundaries, was very informally done, so we can bring that information to the board in June, and, um, you can, we can provide you some options that you may wanna look at, and...
So technically, it's a vacant school right now, so...
We have different levels of information that we've gotten, um, there's a street boundary map that our secretaries operate with, with strike-throughs from those areas that were designated that used to be Lincoln, with this strike-through, and, I mean, a line...
Thanks a little bit, I have a tush.
From Monterey Park to Lincoln School, and it says kindergarten two-three, and it never even went to the four, five, six, you know, so, it's very informal, um, and I think we can bring that historical data to you, um, and we will, we'll give you a couple of options you may wanna consider, and then you can direct us if we're, if you'd like to come back.
Very well, thanks. Okay, Ms. Nandjar?